The Tuesday, April 16th, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Each Tuesday council meeting, the council offers the opportunity for the community to have open podium as we did to speakers this evening. It's an opportunity for residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, typically the first and third Tuesday of each month, from 6:30 to 6:55 PM in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412, by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. I'm privileged this evening to have the opportunity to make and read several proclamations. I know they get a little bit lengthy, but they're incredibly important and valuable as well. So the first one is for our Chamber of Commerce, and I was just commenting downstairs that the years that end in nine tend to be those years that can be formative for communities because they get you set up for the zero year which propels you across a decade. So 1969 in Eden Prairie was incredibly an important year in historical society, the Chamber, and I know there were other organizations as well that I'm not thinking of in the moment, but must have been a really dynamic time in our community's life. So let me read this. Whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce provides opportunities for community leaders, acts as an advocate for commerce, and promotes community growth and development. And whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce has more than 400 members and represents more than 34,000 area employees, and whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce was the first chamber in the nation to develop a future leaders student membership program for high school seniors, and whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber has strengthened our business community, advocated on behalf of our local businesses, and works to provide leadership opportunities, connect to businesses, help businesses grow and be successful. And whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce is the first chamber in the state to organize a trade mission to China that included city and school leaders, and whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce works on behalf of businesses with national, state, and local government and area schools on issues key to business success, and whereas the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce was founded in 1969. Now therefore, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby congratulate the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce on the celebration of its 50th anniversary in 2019, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on April 16th, 2019, Ronald A. Case Mayor. I'll come down and we can give you this and then also allow you to give a speech. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
By speech, we need a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Do you want to do a quick zip for the...
Sure.
Do you want to hold this between us, sir?
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to take a...
Yeah.
Should I take that?
Yeah.
Well, my name's Pat McQueeney, and I've had the privilege of serving as president of the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce for the past 16-plus years. And through my time, in my position, my role, I have always appreciated the great things this community brings. The Chamber has been very fortunate over these years and decades to have strong leadership. And you'll hear a little bit more about this Thursday, we have our big celebration. But the connection point I'd like to highlight tonight is it's amazing the number of business people that later served as city council members and the connection point that the city, the businesses, and our school district have shared for these decades. And that has served us tremendously well. As we all know, Eden Prairie's been recognized best place to live and other numerous awards and lists for greatness and a great community. So on behalf of the Chamber, I want to thank you for the proclamation, Mayor Case, council members, and city staff, and again, thank you for your partnership and your efforts to help our businesses be successful and call Eden Prairie home. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do because it truly is a partnership.
Can I just state when the, Pat, when the celebration is and mention that?
Yeah, so April 18th, so it's this Thursday, 5 to 8:30 at Bear Path. We have a lot of our past business leaders as well as other elected officials. We'll keep it as short as we can with some highlights over these past 50 years, some key achievements, some fun photos of our key businesses. Olympic Hills is 1969 as well, and we had some major employers here back then, we'll highlight those as well. And then we'll also recognize our Business Person of the Year award. So it'll be a great night, and I know a number of you are coming, so thank you for your support.
Were you alive in 1969?
Yeah, I was actually, so yes, I'm a little bit older than the Chamber, but...
All right. Thanks a lot, Pat.
Thank you.
All right. Our second proclamation of the evening is for telecommunicators. And first I read that as telecommuters. I think I work at United Health Group a little bit too much maybe there. This is for telecommunicators, which are 911 dispatchers. How many of you knew that in the audience? Okay, we all learned something. Whereas emergencies can occur at times which require police, fire, and/or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas professional telecommunicators are a vital link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services by monitoring their activities by radio, providing up-to-date information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas professional telecommunicators are not as visible as those who arrive at the scene of emergencies, and whereas telecommunicators exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs, and whereas the city of Eden Prairie Public Safety Answering Point has operated nonstop since September 17th, 1990. Now therefore be it resolved, the Eden Prairie City Council does hereby declare April 14th to 20th, 2019 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Eden Prairie in honor and recognition of our telecommunicators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and well-being of our residents, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on April 16th, 2019, Ronald A. Case Mayor, City of Eden Prairie. And I don't believe anyone's speaking to this, but yes, I believe someone is speaking to this. All right. Chief Weber, thank you so much. I'm glad that you are here to speak to this.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor and council members, just a little bit to add. Here in Eden Prairie, we're very fortunate. We have a team of 12 dispatchers and one supervisor. And philosophically, having our own dispatch center, we've always been able to really maximize that customer service to our residents in that they do so much more than emergency dispatching or 911 dispatching. We really view them as kind of that, whatever government need you have after hours, you can contact the staff in that P S A P, and they will help our residents with any concerns they have. They do in excess of 50,000 calls for service a year when they take those calls in, and they're not all emergencies, and they promptly handle those calls, triage them, and get the appropriate governmental resources out to help our residents solve their problems. Their ability to multitask is unmatchable. I've never seen anything like it. How they can do 12 things simultaneously, they're very, very talented people. And lastly, I think it's important to just acknowledge our city's IT staff and our fire department as well, who has an individual who, Mark Vandenberg, manages the radio system and the IT staff that manages all of the computer, the hardware, the software, that our dispatchers rely on to do their job. So thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you, Chief Weber. Did you want to say something? No? You're leaning forward?
No.
All right.
I'm always leaning forward.
Sounds good. All right, we have one more proclamation this evening. One of my favorites, if you happen to know where I live, I think I have planted 200 trees on my property in the last 30 years or so. Now I'm not regretting it, but I'm experiencing the outcome each fall with leaves and sticks, but I still love it. Arbor Day, April 26th, 2019, proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood projects, and whereas trees whenever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree stewardship and tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Ron Case Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on April 16th, 2019, Ronald A. Case Mayor. All right. Thank you so much for not only listening, but council for supporting all these proclamations. All right, we do have, next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I do have an item under Councilmember Reports, and I believe Councilmember Aho does as well.
Right, so I'd like to make a brief report on the Flying Cloud Airport Joint Airport Zoning Board.
Excellent. Anybody else have any agenda items to add? I'll take a motion then in a second on the agenda as tweaked.
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Amended is a better word than tweaked. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right. Moving to the minutes, does anyone have any items to question on either the workshop from April 2nd or the regular meeting? If not, I'll take a motion to approve, accept both of them.
I move to approve the following city council minutes.
Great. Both workshop and...
Workshop and...
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right. Consent calendar. There's one item that needs to be pulled that I'll reference in a moment. Does anybody else have any items that they'd like to pull for questioning or to vote on separately? So item H has reference, not directly in the wording, but it has implications for United Health Group, my employer, so I'm going to recuse myself. So let's pull H off, and if I can have a motion then to accept A through R minus H with a second.
Move approval of items A through R minus H on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. So could I have a motion for item H in a second?
Move to approve item H.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. And I'm not going to vote. All right. If we can move now to our public hearings, we do have two. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's probably fitting that we have the Chamber proclamation tonight because this first item is in relation to a new business for Eden Prairie, building on our employment. We have Shaden Avionics, which manufactures electronics for planes and helicopters. They are pursuing a Minnesota investment fund alone through D E D to help pay for equipment for a new office that would be located at 7555 Marketplace Drive in Eden Prairie. The program at the state level requires that the city support the application for the loan, act as a conduit for the loan, and hold a public hearing as part of the application process. I know that the business is represented tonight, so they could probably give a much better overview than I could about their loan application and the details of their business that we're looking forward to seeing in Eden Prairie.
Please come forward and give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Dan Nelson. I am the CEO of Shaden Avionics. I've been with the company for 10 years, and we've been located in St. Louis Park up and all through that time. I am a resident of Eden Prairie, have been for almost 20 years now. I love the city. It was somewhat the epicenter of where we directed our search when we had to find a new facility. We are a technology company. We make electronics for airplanes that essentially helps older aircraft modernize. Computer-based equipment, software engineering, hardware engineering, a lot of smart people that work in my company that I don't even know what they do. And I have our Director of Engineering, Monte Thue, here tonight. He's also a resident of Eden Prairie, and he agrees with me that this is a good place to be. So we found the facility, and now we're going through a second phase of a project where we're trying to bring this facility to be a world-class technology center in terms of avionics manufacturing, airplane electronics manufacturing. And with your help, Eden Prairie, and the MIF Fund and the D E D program, we think we will be able to do that. So essentially what the project is, is buying workstations and computer equipment and manufacturing equipment that brings all of our current capabilities to a whole new level. The ultimate goal is really to attract new customers, but even more importantly, new engineers, new technologists. And what we're finding right now is that a lot of the people that we're looking for are coming from California, from Texas, from Florida. And, you know, we want to make this as attractive as option as possible for them because more often than not, six months out of the year, they're coming to visit us in the wintertime. And so we think we can do that. We have a great company, and we're really excited about moving the facility to Eden Prairie here in the summertime.
Great. Good. Mr. Getcho, prior to opening up to the public hearing, do you wish to just explain maybe or have someone just reference why we're doing this? We're just a pass-through, we're not held liable to the loan, but the state requires us to have this public hearing.
That's correct, Mayor. I think you summed it up. I think the, and I can talk a little bit about action that may be needed later, but the requirement is that we authorize the application to D E D for the business. It's a loan not from the city, it's from the state of Minnesota, and there are agreements that would come forward at a later date and that we have to take action on at a future council meeting, but again, the city is not the lender, and the city's not liable directly for the loan. But as those agreements come forward, whatever involvement the city has, or if there is any type of exposure, we'll know that at the time that those agreements come forward. But tonight, it's the public hearing that's required, and then the resolution that the council authorizes the application for the $300,000 loan.
Great. If we open up to the public, do you want to take a seat for now if there's questions to come up? Or do you want to ask? Oh, absolutely. Council, do you have any questions, please?
Yeah, so a question I would have is how many employees do you have now, and do you anticipate increasing the number of employees when you move to Eden Prairie?
Yes. We have 30 employees now, and at least 13 is the number. We expect to grow quite a bit over the next five years. It's really more of timing, but I'm looking at 13 to 15 here in the next two years.
Exciting. Well, that's good.
And most of those positions are degreed engineers, some manufacturing technicians, covers the full gamut.
And so you'll be doing the actual manufacturing of your products in the facility?
Yes. Yeah, we have a fully vertically integrated business where we design the product, we develop it, we do some subcontracting, but most of the manufacturing is done right in the facility as well.
That's fantastic. Thank you for looking at Eden Prairie. We are excited to have you.
No, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, thank you, council members.
That's, I guess, if you want to stay just a second, I did, I realized I didn't open up to my council, so council member Norion, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I think my question was same thing as Brad. I think he was looking at my note, so thank you asking the question. Also, I just want to say it's great that I'm an electrical engineer, and so I'm glad to see more electronic-based businesses coming to Eden Prairie.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We are glad to be here. It's a great place for all of our employees.
We have a great council. We have two electrical engineers. I'm an electrical engineer as well.
Nice.
They're not looking for jobs.
We can put you to work pretty quick.
Okay, I think now we'll open it up to the public and if we need you again. Thank you so much for sharing. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this item tonight? Council?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing application to the Department of Economic, or Employment and Economic Development, D E D, for a $300,000 loan to Shaden Avionics through D E D's Minnesota Investment Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Welcome.
All right. We have a second, fairly perfunctory housekeeping, I believe, but Mr. Getcho, vacation item.
Yes, Mayor and council, you remember the Stable Path Development, which has been through first and second reading, has been approved. There's a portion that you may recall, a small stub of a street, Tomford Trail, that is being vacated as part of the project. And in addition to that, there are two homes that are off of that trail, and one of the homes will have driveway access off of that trail, but as part of the development agreement that you approved, there would be new driveway construction as part of the project for that home, and there are many conditions you could see in the report that are in the development agreement in terms of drainage and utility easements and the driveway work that are necessary, but the developer and the staff support the vacation of that former Tomford Trail as part of the Stable Path Development.
Great. Council, any questions of that, of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this vacation of right-of-way issue? Council? A motion?
I'd move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating the Tomford Trail right-of-way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Payment of claims, is there a motion? Well, let me, a motion, but any items that you wish, before we approve it, that you wish to question, or, go ahead.
I'd like to have a clarification, is really what I'd like to know. This one's under Division 701. It's Water Enterprise Fund. This is for my own clarification. It's a check, looks like amount of $142,066. And what I'm just looking at is a clarification of that, as far as what the fund is.
Mr. Ellis?
Mostly where the question comes up is just the size of it.
Mayor Case, council member, I might have to look into that. I don't have the specifics on that payment, so I apologize.
Okay. Either way, it comes out of the enterprise fund, so do you want to speak to that at all, or?
Yeah, that is correct. This is part of the Water Enterprise, so this is a separate fund, a fund that is supported by the revenue generated from water sales, or it could be funds that are paid in through the development when you pay trunk fees, WAC charges, your water access charge. So that's the primary funding source. There are other grants that come in. I don't know the specifics of that individual.
So just to be really clear, that is not an individual charge. That's a summary of all claims that fall in the Water Enterprise Fund. So whatever payments the city's making for the monthly payments related to that entire operation, those are a summary of all the individual bills that would add up to that dollar amount. There's no one claim for that dollar amount.
So if we look back month by month, we probably would see a similar item, line item like that?
I would think so. I don't know, there could obviously be certain expenses in a given month if there's a certain supply of lime or something with that, that's wastewater actually, there's water, with the operation, but that's the conglomerate of all the monthly expenses related to that fund, it's not one claim.
Okay, that's a good explanation. I didn't mean to catch you off guard on that, Mr. Ellis, on that. That's a good explanation. Thank you.
No, it's a good question. Any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion then to approve the payments of claims.
I move the approval of payment of claim as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Norion.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right. We are down to the reports of council members. Councilmember Aho, do you want to go first?
Sure, that's fine. So I just wanted to give a brief report and summary of kind of what happened with the Flying Cloud Airport Joint Airport Zoning Board, otherwise known as JASB. So I chaired that board for the last couple of years. This has been a process that's been ongoing for a little over 10 years, I think about 11 years. So it's a long, it's been a long process. And really, what the goal of this board was, was to codify the zoning around the airport. So when I say that, here's what I mean. There are areas around the airport that are MAC-owned, there are areas around the airport that are residential-owned, that are, some owned by different individuals, and when you have an airport, there's many different regulations in terms of safety zones around the airport. So the goal is obviously to always to protect the public from any aircraft accident that might occur around the airport. We want to have safety. Safety is always a very number-one goal. But also, you have to balance that with potential development around the area in economics. So there's always a balance. And so, but when you do this, you want to do it in such a way that you preserve the safety of our residents and businesses. And so through this process, the Joint Airport Zoning Board was composed of members from the city of Eden Prairie, myself, we had some city staff that participated in it, and then we had members from other surrounding cities, some Shakopee, Bloomington initially, and other cities. And so, and then we also worked with many different agencies. So we had to work with the airport, we had to work with MAC, we had to work with MINDOT, the FAA, the surrounding cities, and residents as well, and businesses. So there's a lot of moving parts here. The way it really works is that the MINDOT has a state guideline, so they have state safety guidelines. They say in zone, safety zone A, you can't do certain things, safety zone B, you can't do certain things, safety zone C, you can't do certain things. And the FAA has rules regarding this, and the MAC has rules, and MINDOT. And so what we did is we worked with MINDOT to say, some of these areas where you have restrictions on what you can do in these zones may be a little bit overly prescriptive and not allow any development to occur, or the type of development that probably will occur in those areas if allowed, but would still be safe. So what we had to do as a board is pull together all kinds of studies and data and analyze it and look at that to... analyze it and look at that to show that what we were proposing was still safe, it was going to provide the safety that we desire, but yet allow some economic development to occur around the airport. And so, this will benefit MAC, it'll benefit our residents, it'll benefit businesses, and it's a good thing. So, throughout this process, we had many public hearings. We had our, our last meeting was Wednesday, April 10th, where we took the results of the MAC-approved agreement, the final, it was called the Final Statement of Legal Authority, Findings of Fact, and Conclusions of Law and Order. And so, we approved and adopted the final FCM zoning ordinance. So, that really concludes the work of the JASB board, and the JASB now will cease to convene because our work is complete. So, I just wanted to report that to everyone. So, if you have any questions on that, you can find out more information on this, either the city's website, MAC's website, or probably, I think it's probably on MINDOT's website as well, but, or feel free to contact me, and I can get you any details on that. So, that's my report. Thanks for the time.
Is it MINDOT and also the MAC, or is the MAC not part of contacting as well on their website? I mean, aren't Metropolitan Airport Commission's part of JASB, correct?
Yes, yeah, MAC, Metropolitan Airport's Commission is part of JASB, and yes, so it's, they do have the information on their website as well as, I'm sure you can also find it on, probably on MINDOT's website as well.
Got it.
Anyway, so we concluded our work, and I think we have a good result. Our city staff was very instrumental in helping with the process and making sure that what we are doing is in line with what is best for our city and our residents, and I feel very confident that we came to a good, good balance of safety versus economic development.
Thank you, Brad. I, as everyone knows here, have been the one council member that hasn't always been in support of JASB in general philosophically. That being said, I really appreciate that you have represented the city well through all these years, so we appreciate your service on that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I have an item that I would like to speak to that relates to the forum prior to this meeting, for those of you that were in attendance. That's a non-recorded, it's not on-air time where citizens can come and address the council. And at that forum, Dr. Scott Adams, who works, a professor at the university, came and spoke along with Rod Fisher, resident of Eden Prairie, and then we had two high school young men, Zach and Niles. And the adults were representing along with other groups, but the Citizens Climate League, the CCL, and the students were here on behalf of the Tree Hugger Club at the high school, which is their environmental group as well there. So, I wanted to make a few comments relating to what they spoke on and referring to some of my personal beliefs, but then I also want to, and the council's part of this because we have passed legislation over the last couple of years that impact positively this issue as well. So, I just want to start out by saying I couldn't agree more that of the myriad of issues facing our country and our world today, that climate change is the one crisis that has the potential, in my mind, and I think it's supported by science, to potentially end a human habitation on this earth. That makes it really more important than any other issue, makes every other really, and we have some critical issues facing the world today, but makes every issue take a backseat because if our world no longer supports human life, then all other human impact problems cease to exist. So, here's what I'm excited about happening in Eden Prairie today. We currently have our Sustainable Eden Prairie Initiative, which looks at energy, landscape, waste, and water, which itself is a next step to our completed 2014-15 initiative that we successfully met all of our goals back in 2015. With our Sustainable Eden Prairie Initiative, conservation is interwoven in sustainability throughout the Energy Action Plan, which also, as an entity, is parked on, as an appendix, on our Sustainable Eden Prairie Initiative. So, we already have established city goals of reducing energy-related greenhouse gas emissions. This council has set goals that we would look at the 2015 baseline, and we would lower energy-related greenhouse gas emissions 30% by 2025 and 80% by 2050. Now, those are great goals, but unless we scaffold details into that noble goal, it's just likely not going to be met. So, I'm pleased to report that our Conservation Commission is going to be tasked this year with the objective of establishing future mile markers leading up to 2050. That was kind of picked out of the air, but there's a whole lot of environmental groups out there today that are choosing 2050, the halfway point through the century, as an important benchmark of accomplishing some major goals. The commission, the Conservation Commission, will be tasked with establishing the intermediary goals that will get us to then the larger goals that get set for 2050. So, as a council, we'll have the opportunity to continue to define and tweak our plan in order to ensure eventual success. Secondly, on a personal basis, as mayor and as an individual, but as mayor, I will be signing on to any petition out there that's available to me to sign as mayor that urges the United States Congress to enact without delay the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Clearly, there's a momentum growing in communities really across the earth, but across the U.S., everywhere, to look at the 100% alternative energy concept. Xcel has pledged, our own energy company here in Minnesota, as you know, has pledged by 2050 to be totally 100% relied on, relying on alternative energy. Hennepin County recently has pledged to have 100% of its vehicles electric by 2030. So, it's going to take every community on earth doing its share. I'm going to continue to keep this conversation front and center throughout the rest of this year on into 2020, and I'm asking all of you, but also all residents of Eden Prairie, for your continued support, particularly the council, though, of having our Conservation Commission build out an energy-scaffolded plan of action during 2019 that will be ready to put into action 2020 and beyond. I would welcome any of you joining me over the next several months in supporting the Congressional Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, but I particularly am excited about what we can do here in Eden Prairie as well.
If any council members have any comments, or you'd like to respond, you certainly are welcome to. I'm not looking for that, but you're more than happy to. Go ahead.
I would just respond that, you know, I think, I think it is very important for us as a city to do everything we can to preserve our environment and to reduce energy use and all the things that we've been involved in, and I think we've set, we've set a great example for many, many cities, many organizations, and I think we've achieved our goals. We've been a Green Step Cities, top-level, five cities award. So, I think we're doing our part. I think we're doing a great job. I have a little bit of, I haven't heard all the details of the Energy Carbon Dividend Act yet, but it really concerns me when I hear talk about legislation where we're going to charge people for pulling energy resources from the earth, utilizing those, that we're going to charge them a fee for doing that, and then the government is going to collect that fee, and then the government is going to redistribute it to people, because the government isn't necessarily always a very efficient distributor of those kinds of dollars, and there's always administrative costs with doing that. So, I really, without knowing the details of that plan yet, I kind of failed to see how that is necessarily efficient and beneficial. So, I would not personally, until I had a chance to really look at that, be in favor of supporting that kind of legislation.
Sure, thank you.
Because I think it costs, it's going to cost consumers more for their power.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd just like to say I've been extremely happy with how our businesses and our residents have been working to cut their own energy and do what they can that makes sense for their families and their businesses, to work with us on the council in Eden Prairie. It's proved to have a lot of businesses saving a lot of money. Our mall has done tremendous things by that, and so do a lot of our residents, and I appreciate everybody's effort to both make themselves more sustainable as a family or as a business and cut our energy use in both from the city standpoint and from all the other components of our community. And if we continue to do this, we will be doing good for everyone.
Councilmember Norian.
I agree that we have a crisis coming in terms of sustainability, energy, conservation, climate change. I think we are underestimating the impact in the future. So, we need to do whatever we need to do, start doing little bit at a time now, then wait and explore something in front of us. I have looked at quite a few different things about how do we solve these problems, and I can say this is one of the plans, I think, is, makes sense. And I am overall conserving energy and reducing carbon. I'm in favor of that. And also that, I think, as a city, that we have been doing quite a lot of work, and I do congratulate the managers and staff and Conservation Group to continue doing the work as well. Thank you.
Sure.
Just make one final comment, and we certainly can continue this conversation. It's a good one, and I appreciate the various opinions being shared at the council level. I do believe that similar to it took government subsidies to get the solar and wind industry to the threshold of viability, without it, it never would have happened. So, oh-so often, we've seen in our history that unless change is incentivized, it just usually won't occur. So, if we get charged a little higher in energy costs, but it literally saves the earth, and we won't know that maybe till after we're dead, but we see a doomsday condition coming on earth, and so if we get charged a little bit higher now, but it ends up being, having tremendous greater benefit later on businesses, on individual health costs, and just, you can just, the myriad of issues that would be addressed, then it's well worth it. But I certainly understand various perspectives, and clearly, they're out there. Just pick up the paper, and they're out there in the world today, so. So, thank you. I just wanted to make that statement. Again, appreciate the group coming to open forum, and we'll continue this, and the Conservation Commission will very soon, Mr. Getcho, correct, be tasked. And again, I don't know if they'll be on a six-month or a nine-month, but they'll be looking at this larger issue for us and bringing back proposals, probably again, like a laundry list, not like you got to do this, which sets us up, but much more of a, you could do this, and it might cost this, and you can do this, and it might cost that, or just options in a continuum. I think that would be so valuable, and I think they're excited to do that, so.
Yeah, that's, Mayor and Council, that is the plan. As you know, you had a sustainability update at your last workshop, and there was discussion of this at your strategic planning session. So, that is one of the main, if not the main, item on the Conservation Commission agenda for 2019, is what we would call an update of that Energy Action Plan as we move to that next phase, as our partnership with Xcel Energy and Partners in Energy ends, we need to do what would be the next phase of that plan. You're correct.
Excellent. All right, there are, I believe, no other items to come before the council this evening. Is that correct? Oh, are you clapping for the issue, or that there's no other items to come before the council this evening? No, thank you so much. Appreciate your support. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mediate adjourn.[1781.83]